Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 30th, 2019 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Carpettian.
Quintero.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Quintero, would you please lead us in the flag, soon?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, we give thanks for the continued blessings on this fine city and its leaders. We ask that you be a guide to our council in all of their considerations. We also ask that you be with us in our daily lives, that we may be positive role models for our future generation of leaders. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the July 30th, 2019 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 25th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Let's go to the next item.
Presentations and appointments. We have a cancellation for our council meeting on Tuesday, August 6th, 2019.
So we're not going to have any update, then, for that?
Correct. We will have National Night Out, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it might be a good time to remind everyone that Tuesday, August 6th, is a day that is celebrated throughout the country as National Night Out. Most of the neighborhoods in the city are having little events. They oftentimes involve food and drink and some neighborly get-togethers. Sometimes there's music. Some of them even have dancing. So please check with your local community association. And do we have a list also that we...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I believe, the police chief, I'm not sure if someone is going to... Is it Sergeant McToddo? Please come on up, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. He'll give you a quick update. We do have that under Presentations for this evening.
Well, I took you out of order, so we'll take you now, then.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, and members of the city council. One week from today, Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:00 PM to 8-ish, or wherever the night takes us, is going to be the 36th Annual National Night Out. And as you have alluded to earlier, it is our Super Bowl of community events, where neighborhoods across the country get together and get to know one another and build on community partnerships with city officials, police, and fire, and strengthen neighborhood unity and spirit. To date, we have 37 locations thus far in the city, a fairly robust number. We still have a week to go, and neighborhoods across the city can still plan one out and just go under the city website and under Police and National Night Out and register for it so we can appropriately send personnel to their locations. But thus far, we have 37.
And we do have a promo.
Every year, Glendale neighbors come together on the first Tuesday in August to take a stand against crime. National Night Out is an annual nationwide community-building campaign promoting police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods a safer, better place to live. This year's event will be held on Tuesday, August 6th. Neighborhoods across the city will host block parties, festivals, cookouts, and youth activities. If you don't know your neighbors yet, this is a great time to say hello and start a new friendship. We encourage you to get involved with the program in your community. Join us for National Night Out 2019 on Tuesday, August 6th. Visit glendalenn.com for locations near you.
There you go. I hope everyone has a chance to go out and meet their neighbors on Tuesday, August 6th. Ms. Beers, next, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I may take one other item out of order this evening. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it is my pleasure to bring forward the appointment of Michelle Flynn as the Finance Director for the City of Glendale this evening. Ms. Flynn has been with the City of Glendale for a little over 19 years. She has been serving as the Interim Finance Director since April of this year as well. She's held a number of positions with us, from Principal Internal Auditor to Budget Administrator, City Auditor, Assistant Director of Finance, and, as I mentioned earlier, our Interim Finance Director when Bob Elliott retired in April of this year. And I believe there's a sighting of him in a comfortable outfit in the back. Prior to Michelle's local government experience, she worked for reputable firms such as Ernst &amp; Young as an auditor. She has her Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration Accounting from Cal State LA. Her master's in Business Administration from Woodbury University. She also has a number of certifications. She became a Certified Public Accountant in 1990, a Certified Internal Auditor in the year 2000, and a Certified Government Auditing Professional. Michelle's also committed to volunteerism in her community, and she has done this for as long as I've known her here in the City of Glendale. She is a past member of Seroptimist International of Glendale, and she served as their treasurer for some time. She continues to volunteer with the Girl Scouts of America and her children's school, depending on what the needs are. Michelle, as you all know her and have known her for many years, is one of the most honest, trustworthy individuals you will come across. She believes in the longstanding culture that we have here in the City of Glendale and specifically within the Finance Department as it relates to transparency in the work that we do. I am very much looking forward to working with her as a department head. She's compassionate as a leader, yet she is a straight shooter, and you know where she's coming from, and she has very high expectations. Michelle is joined by her family this evening. There are a number of folks here, but the two individuals that I will mention, of course, her pride and joy, her son Connor and daughter Madeline are here this evening as well. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it is my pleasure to bring the appointment of Michelle Flynn forward and ask for your support this evening.
Thank you. Let's bring it forward in a more official manner. Ms. Devine?
I would like to make the motion that pursuant to Article 4, Section 4 of the Glendale City Charter and Government Section Code 54957, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Michelle Flynn as the Director of Finance. Ms. Flynn's job duties shall be as defined in the job specification for Director of Finance, which shall include the duties of Director of Administrative Services as described in the city charter, including Article 11 thereof. Further, this motion shall be the written statement of appointment of a person of recognized attainment as set forth in Charter Article 24, Section 5. As required by Article 24, Section 10 of the Charter, the Civil Service Commission shall certify the fact of Ms. Flynn's appointment as Director of Finance.
Is second the motion? Thank you for the second and the motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Carpettian.
Quintero.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words to us, your family, your friends, your colleagues?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It is my sincere thank you for giving me this opportunity, and it's my pleasure to be the next Director for the City of Glendale, Director of Finance for the City of Glendale. I'm very excited to take on this role, and I will definitely continue to do my very best to make sure that council's priority of fiscal responsibility is achieved. Thank you also to Ms. Beers for the confidence and the trust and in allowing me to continue to grow professionally here with the city. My team in finance is absolutely amazing. There are a lot of them are back here in the audience tonight. I'd like to personally thank each and every one of them for being the best coworkers anyone could ever ask for. They are true professionals, committed to doing the right thing, and they definitely take a lot of pride in the work that they do. We're a little family of just under 40 people, but we all truly care for one another. We not only work together, but we celebrate together, we laugh together, and sometimes we even cry together. It's my honor to be part of the finance family here in Glendale, and I thank them all very, very much for everything that they do. I also want to definitely say thank you to my personal family, my kids, Connor and Maddie. I can't look at them right now. You guys make my job as a mom very, very easy. I love you both very much, and I thank you for always, always being in my corner. To my parents, my sister, who aren't here tonight, but they are what made me who I am today. From everything, from my dad's honesty to my mom's faith and the awesome sibling fights I had with my sister as we were growing up. I'm so grateful for everything that they've done. My parents always taught me that when we're, as we were growing up, that we put God and family first, and everything falls into place. And that's definitely what has happened, and I feel very grateful and blessed. To my amazing mother-in-law Nora, who's here as well, her amazing Bo Richard, who's very new to our family, my brothers-in-law Terrence and Kevin, Kevin couldn't be here, but Terrence is here tonight, and my sister-in-law Noreen. Thank you all for your love and support. I definitely could not have done this without you, especially these last couple of years. I know Patrick is happy and watching down on us today. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I definitely appreciate this opportunity very, very much, and I take it very seriously, and I look forward to leading the fine men and women of the Finance Department here in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. The duties of our Finance Director carry some of the greatest challenges in this organization. We're always trying to make our budget conform to our... Make our revenues and our expenses balance, as well as project years, sometimes decades, ahead. So we know that you've got great experience. You had great training by Mr. Elliott. You've been through the organization. You've got great support of your colleagues and your staff. So I'm going to sleep well tonight, knowing that you are our new Finance Director. Any other comments from colleagues?
Just want to say congratulations. And being a former, or a Seroptimist, I always felt comfortable and at rest when you were at the helm of our, as our treasurer. So I know you're going to do a fantastic job, because you've been doing one for 19 years already. So who's to say for 19 more? Well, maybe not, but congratulations. That's probably pushing it. Councilmember Agajanian, but congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I want to echo what Ms. Beers said. I've also watched you throughout the years, always being able to answer questions, all the information at hand, and such a pleasant demeanor. And I'm very happy for you, and I'm happy for the City of Glendale and all the people that work under you. I think you're going to be a tremendous director, and hopefully you will be with us for many more years to come. Your kids are still young, so you're going to be here for a while, Michelle. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
You know, until recently, I didn't know you are CPA. I know you're a good accountant, you have lots of knowledge and expertise in this field, 19 years being with the City of Glendale. But just recently, I learned that you are a Certified Public Accountant. So thank you for joining us. And hopefully you're going to do excellent job as you are doing so far.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy the evening, Michelle. Thank you very much again.
Thank you so much.
Let's go to 3B.
Appointment of Board and Commission Member. V1, Catherine Everly, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission.
Ms. Devine?
Okay. It's with great pleasure that I asked my colleagues to approve the appointment of Kate Everly to the Community Services and Parks Commission. Kate is in PR and marketing. She's a Pomona graduate. And, but most importantly, as far as this commission goes, she is the Chair of the Board of Directors of Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. And so it's with great pride that I ask that you approve Kate Everly as Community Services and Parks Commissioner.
Is there a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Carpettian.
Quintero.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Thank you. And Kate is here tonight, so maybe she can come up and just kind of introduce herself to everybody?
Take a bow.
Take a bow.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to express my gratitude for the honor of serving the people of Glendale in this role. I have tremendous respect and admiration for the Community Services and Parks staff who I've gotten to know through the Parks Foundation, and I look forward to working with them to expand and improve what we offer to our residents and visitors. For guidance, I will look to the example of Mark Sturdivant, who approached his work for the people of Glendale with inspiration, passion, and dedication, and in turn inspired so many others to put their shoulders to the wheel. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service, your future service. Let's do 3C.
Service Award, Mark Young, Glendale Water and Power, 30 years.
Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce, to reintroduce to you, Mr. Mark Young, celebrating his 30 years with the city. I actually had to write some of this down, unusual for me, but that's just a testament to his illustrious career, not my fading memory. But Mark was born and raised in Queens, New York, which if you talk to him for about 15 seconds, you get that real quick. You can take the boy out of Queens, but you certainly can't take the Queens out of the boy. He's also a Yankee fan. Is that true?
Big Yankee.
Yeah, that must have gone over real well in Flushing. You get chased a lot.
Oh, hot. 69 Mets were the thing.
Mark served in the U.S. Navy, and notable there as he was in the nuclear power program and served in the nuclear fleet. So he's had that power and power supply and power generation background for quite some time. He found his way eventually to Glendale, and in 1989 started his first job with the city as a power plant operator apprentice. And over the years, he has worked his way through that entire division. He has been in the power plant, he's been in the dispatch operation, and he has been in the trading operation. And I listed his accomplishments. Power plant operator, electrical systems dispatcher, senior electrical systems dispatcher, power scheduler, energy marketer-trader, energy marketing trade and manager, integrated resource planning administrator. And within the last month, he was promoted to Deputy General Manager of Power Management. And that gave me a lot of pride and satisfaction to be able to be the one that was able to promote him. And I know he will do a wonderful job. Mark, in his spare time, does nothing but track gas and energy trading trends. No, I'm kidding. Mark Galtz. Not big of a stretch, you know. But Mark Galtz. So you can imagine that takes all of his free time, if his wife would let him. I know he enjoys traveling with his wife Kelly, and I'll let him formally introduce her and his other special guest in a few minutes. He is an avid New York Giants fan, which has been a struggle for the last couple of years. But I think if you keep drafting the way you did this year, you'll be right back in the hunt in five or 10 years. But on a serious note, Mark has worked directly for me for over two years, and it has been a pleasure. He has been a tremendous asset to me personally, to the department and to the city. As you well know, he has been instrumental in probably two of the biggest issues we have faced in GWP and maybe our history, outside of the original construction of the utility and development of the utility, which is our Integrated Resource Plan and the future of Grayson. Mark has been right there. He's been instrumental. He's been a tremendous asset. He's been a blessing from God. I shouldn't say that, but yeah, he has been, absolutely. And I don't know, in certain circumstances, if we'd have been able to get everything done that we needed to get done if it hadn't have been for his hard work and dedication. So with that, it gives me a great pleasure to present to you, for his 30-year pin, Mark Young.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. I can't believe it's been 30 years. It just seems like yesterday that I was coming to Glendale, not knowing where Glendale was, and I wound up marrying a Glendalean. My mother-in-law is here, Billy Wine. She's been a resident of Glendale since 1962. And my wife, Kelly, she's grew up in Glendale and went to schools. So I really feel like this is my second home. I can't get rid of the accent, but I feel like Glendale is my home. We have some, we still have some work to do in GWP, and I hope, I hope we can make the place better after, and then I have a chance to retire, play golf with my wife. And I don't get used to her winning, but I'm going to try. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I have a service award for you, but I do want to say, I didn't know you had a background in nuclear power. Had I known, perhaps we could have thrown the ultimate renewable energy, nuclear, into our Grayson IRP. I'm just kidding, Glendale Environmental Coalition. But I know that the past year has probably been more challenging than the 29 years all put together. But we appreciate your leadership and your education for many of us as to how the power system works and balances, and how we can obtain and transmit and produce power for our residents. So with that, I'm very glad that we had you on board. I'm going to come down and give you a few items. First is the 30-year service award. Thank you for your loyal and faithful service. This is a wonderful gift box, and there's something in here. Tradition has it that you give this to your wife. Or whoever has the lowest handicap, so in this case, I think it's your wife also. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it, everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, so Mark, just like Michelle, it's been a pleasure working with you throughout the years, and more than anything else, just kind of listening to you, since everything that you discuss is usually so technical in nature that it's better just to listen. But you've done a great job. You sure are a professional, and I came in late to the whole repowering of Grayson. But certainly the previous years, working with you and GWP, has always been a positive. Congratulations to you, and hopefully you're going to hang on for quite a few more years. It's not time yet.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? They echo our remarks.
We do, and I...
We hate to pile on.
No, but I just want to say that while we were going through this whole Grayson experience, one of the positive, the most positive comments that I was getting, some of them, were about you and how you handled the public and the issues, answered questions. And I always received positive feedback about you. And I know, sitting in the briefings with you, it was always, just listening to you talk makes everything interesting because of your accent, but you seem so knowledgeable. I was so impressed, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I hope you stay for another... Should I say another 30 years, folks?
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero? I have to say that during the past few years that I've worked with you, I never thought that you're over 39, so you started here at age nine, because you look like 39-years-old man, not more.
Thank you, thank you.
And you are here, you have been here for 30 years, and I'm living here for 40 years, but I didn't meet you before, until I joined the council, a big city council member. And it's still, I don't believe that you worked here for 30 years, since I didn't see you, and you don't like older than 39. Tell me. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk? Let's go to the next item.
The next item was National Night Out. But as we spoke about it before, I'm going to go to item number E, which is Proclamation Designating July 30th, 2019, as the 8th Annual Comfort Woman Day.
Thank you. Will all those here for the Comfort Women presentation come forward? Mr. Chang Lee?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Since 2012, that mayor, Mr. Quintero, proclaimed July 30th as a Korean Comfort Woman Day. Every year, we come back here to commemorate the Comfort Woman Day. You know, since 2017, the art exhibit that used to be two weeks now is about a month and a half long. You know, July, we started from July 12th, and it's going to go until September 1st. For those Glendaleans who have not been to Central Library yet, you know, we have our exhibit that's going on, honoring Comfort Women, and also, you know, expressing in our form to educate and also to let people know what happened in the history. So, you know, take interest in this issue, and I know that Glendale does. And thank you for all those years for supporting the and proclaiming Comfort Woman Day and also, you know, erecting the Peace Statue in 2013 and through the lawsuit, also protecting the Peace Statue in Central Park. You know, a few days ago, you know, there was an unfortunate incident that happened, you know, at the statue. And the statue was defaced with dog fishes. And it was most unfortunate. You know, there are some individuals out there, extremists, that, you know, does defamation like that. So I'd like to, you know, request to this council and mayor, I know there's a video camera that's installed on a dog recreation center there. Perhaps we may need additional video surveillance camera in the area, maybe more lighting in that area so that, you know, this type of instance do not occur. I know that Glendale Police is looking into this, and the detective is really working hard to catch the culprit. But our community also, and many organizations have shown their support and interest in, you know, supporting financially, you know, to put these things up. So if the city can expedite the process to put the additional surveillance cameras and the lighting in the area, our community is really willing and, you know, happy to support such activity. So I'd like to introduce my colleagues here that have joined us here today. Phyllis Kim, formerly known as KFC, now known as A-Care. And then we have Samir, Women's Association. President, Mrs. Lee, and her members are here. And also, we have Korean American Federation of North Los Angeles is here with us. So again, I just cannot say enough about, you know, City of Glendale and Glendaleans to recognize atrocities that happened in the dark times of our history, to recognize, to uphold the history that was wrong, to make it right. So with that, thank you very much.
I do have a proclamation, and I will read it into the record. Whereas during its colonial and wartime occupation of Asia and the Pacific Islands from the 1930s through the duration of World War II, the Japanese Imperial Army commissioned the acquisition of young girls who became known to the world as Comfort Women. And whereas the Comfort Women system of forced military prostitution by the Imperial Army is considered one of the largest cases of human trafficking in the 20th century. And whereas the City of Glendale commends the United States Congress House of Representatives for the passage of Resolution 121 and joins with their recommendations that the government of Japan should educate current and future generations about this horrible crime while following the recommendations of the international community with respect to the Comfort Women. And whereas the City of Glendale has a longstanding history of recognizing cultural diversity and has been a strong advocate for human rights around the world, this was evident in 2012 when the City of Glendale first proclaimed July 30 as Comfort Women Day and in 2013 when the Glendale City Council voted to approve the Comfort Women Monument in the Glendale Central Park. Since the decision was made, the City of Glendale has continued to support the efforts to secure the rights of these known as Comfort Women. Now therefore, I, Arne Ajarian, Mayor of Glendale, proclaim July 30, 2019 as Korean Comfort Women Day. And will my council colleagues join me in the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess, I think, so maybe face down. So you guys can all gather here? Yes? Frank? Frank, what's your comment?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Will you be making some comments?
So thank you, Mr. Lee, for you and your group's advocacy on behalf of the Comfort Women. You had a wonderful event on Saturday. Was it Saturday? Saturday evening. Mr. Quintero was the chairman of the event. As far as the offer for the additional security, I have conveyed that to the city manager, and she's in discussions with the police chief. And we can get back to you and explain what we can do about that offer. Again, this is an annual event, and we're happy to be here to commemorate the horrible era of human suffering that the Comfort Women went through.
Thank you, Mayor.
I want to thank the organizing committee, Mr. Lee and everyone else. It's every year I get nervous when I get the email about the committee coming together. And every year, I have never been disappointed. They always manage to come up with programs that are informative, educational, solemn. And this year was no exception. So I'm looking forward to next year, and I'm looking forward to the following year. And it's just an issue that we're not going to let go. And every year, I'm also pleased to know, when I get there, that there are always so many young people that come to the commemoration event. And it's not just older people. Younger people are there and carrying the torch forward. And in the past couple of years, to me, what's striking is we were the first ones to do it here in the United States, but now there's more and more across the country. And in San Francisco, it's not, this wasn't... The Korean population bore the brunt of slavery and servitude. But in fact, they did it in China. They did it in Southeast Asia, et cetera. And so the statue in San Francisco is a Chinese young woman, a Filipino, and a Korean. And that's what they were. They weren't, some of them weren't even young women. They were just kids. They were just teenagers that had this done to them. So it's a very solemn thing that we do every year, and hopefully we'll keep the pressure on throughout the entire year, not just one day out of the year.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would, I would. This is always kind of such a solemn, solemn time. And I've often said that women's rights are human rights, and so we have to always respect that. As Mr., as Chang Lee said, the exhibit at the Reflect Space is amazing. Violence against women is unacceptable. I think what we have to do is always remember the courage of these women, the grandmas, that had to endure this travesty. And I think it's that courage that keeps the young people and all of you and all of us going forward, moving forward, and doing the right thing. So in honor of those, the Comfort Women, let's make sure that their memory is never forgotten.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Come, Samira.
Let's go to 3F.
Mayor, commendation for Homenetmen Glendal Ararat Chapter.
Will Homenetmen Ararat please come forward?
How are you? Good evening, Mayor Ajarian and councilmembers. My name is Alan Gracossi, and I'm an athlete and a member of the delegation representing the City of Glendale at the 7th Pan-Armenian Games in Armenia next month, from August 5 to August 17. This international athletic tournament, known as the Armenian Olympics, started back in 1999 and takes place in the capital city of Yerevan every four years. The teams represent cities rather than organizations and countries, promoting friendship, cultural exchange, and cultivating peace amongst athletes from around the world. For the past year, 108 athletes, coaches, and managers from Glendale have been preparing for these games and will have the opportunity to meet and compete with another 4,000 athletes from 125 cities and 35 countries. Since 2003, Homenetmen Glendal Ararat Chapter has organized and facilitated the colossal tasks of preparing, training, and arranging the logistics to represent our city at these games. And we are grateful to you, the City Council, and various city groups for the support and encouragement in the past and once again this year. I would like to ask Armik Ibrahimian, the Chair of our Glendale delegation, to say a few words. And we also have a short video to present to you and to the public. Thank you.
You?
Honorable Mayor Ajarian and City Councilmembers, my name is Armik Ibrahimian. I've been a 40-year leader of Homenetmen Ararat, and I'm the Chair of a committee that we've started since October to work out this huge task of taking, yes, it's the largest ever, more than 100 athletes to Armenia to represent City of Glendale. We're so proud that we've been representing the city since 2003 every four years. And we're going to do our best to represent the city the best possible way on the court, off the court, because this is a very international event and with TV coverage, media, and everything all over the world. They already know about Glendale, and we want to make us more proud. This year, we're going to participate in seven different sports. Basketball, which we are taking two men's team and one women's team. Soccer men's team. Women's volleyball. And I'm glad to say we also have 15 individuals who are participating in individual sports. We always have had our table tennis, strong table tennis group. We have track and field, female tennis, male and female. And this year, I'm very happy that we're also representing and taking a swimming team, which I'm sure Ara will be very happy to...
Is there an age limit on the team?
So with all that said, again, we would like to thank the council and manager and staff of City of Glendale for supporting us. Especially, I would like to have a special thank to our fire association, our police association, and our management association, which with their financial support that they made to us. And we're going to try to also meet some elected officials there, you know, to make it more official. And I've already been in contact with our own Zara Sinanian, who is taking a role in Armenia as a Chief Commissioner for the diaspora. And we're going to try to also make some other officials as well. As far as promoting City of Glendale, we always come up with a new logo, which will be printed everywhere on our uniforms, T-shirts, and everything. And we also brought a few small gifts for the council members. T-shirts that, hopefully, I got the right sizes. And we also have some, again, pins and keychains and also wristbands promoting City of Glendale and community of Glendale. And we're going to participate at the opening ceremony, which is held in Artsakh this year. And then the games will continue in Yerevan. We should be back on the 19th of August. And hopefully, we're bringing back some championship trophies and medals. We may come back here and show it off.
Report back to us on your successes.
So any of you want to say, at least introduce yourself?
Hi, thank you guys for having us here today. I'm Andre Spite. I'm on the men's basketball team. And I'll be going over there representing Glendale the right way and coming back with a gold medal.
My name is Patrick Begian. I want to thank you all for your support, all the coaches, staff, players. Don't take this opportunity lightly. And it is an honor to represent our city in Armenia this year.
My name is Oren Bandarian. I'm representing Team 2. And yeah, this is my, it's an honor to go. I've been, I represented the Scouts five years ago, five years ago, and it was a wonderful experience. So now I'm finally representing basketball, which is, you know, my number-one favorite thing in life. So it's an honor. Thank you.
My name is Tommy Becktame. Like Andre said, we're just going to represent Glendale in the best light that we can and do our best to make that name a very good brand and a well-represented brand. So thank you for your support.
I'm back. I'm Alan, you guys, as I mentioned. I'm on a soccer team. If you'd like, I could read my thing again, or I could just say another thing. No, but thank you, really. This is my third time going, and I think a few others have gone before, too. And every year, it's different. And every year, it's just another great experience. And we really can't thank the city enough for all you guys do for us. And like Armik mentioned, the city groups and the police association, the fire association. And so we hope to make you guys proud and we hope to represent our city well. So thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a commendation, and I will be presenting it to the Homenetmen Ararat Chapter in recognition of commemorating the 7th Annual Pan-Armenian Athletic Games. This tournament will be a testament to the great sportsmanship and teamwork fundamentals that have been instilled in our athletes. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we all wish Homenetmen Ararat Chapter the best of luck during the tournament. And you have to report back on how you did. So let's all go and get a photo. It's a good luck photo, so. Are you complaining? Thank you. Good luck.
Positive attitude, yes.
That's, that's great. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to say that for those of you that don't know, I accompanied Homenetmen four years ago to Yerevan, and I have never been prouder to be a member of a delegation as I was at that event. It is a wonderful event. The athletes were so fantastic and polite and helpful and just good sports. And so I just want to wish all of you a safe trip, a successful trip, and just have a good time. It's, you just will be amazed at the friendships that you will make. And I know Alan said that he was on the trip that I was on four years ago, and so good luck to you and to all of you. Thank you, Mr. Raja.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Rabbi Bachman, how are you, sir?
An hour early.
We missed you for the invocation. However, I have a proposition for you.
I'm only at 7 o'clock.
I have a proposition for you. If you stick around maybe a half hour, I'll let you do the benediction. Will that work? Okay. I know, I appreciate you coming out. I don't, I think that's, is that okay, Mr. City Attorney? We've never done a benediction before. Okay, very good. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Consent items are following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion and any member of council, or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I wanted to pull, I wanted to pull two of them, please. B, B and F.
All right, with those exceptions. Is there a second?
Sec.
Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Quintero? Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Please ring 4B. Director of Public Works Regarding Glendale V-Line Maintenance Facility Project Professional Support Services. B1, motion approving additional services with the Lee Flora Group, LLC, in the not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 for project management owners' representative services.
Ms. Devine.
Two, motion approving additional services with Arcatis US Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $142,000 for quality assurance services. Three, motion approving additional services with RMA Group in not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 for special inspection and testing services. Four, motion approving additional services with SWCA Environmental Consultants in not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 for cultural monitoring services.
Thank you.
Ms. Devine.
Yes, I just had a question about the provision for electric buses at this V-Line Maintenance Facility, and are we looking to the future in, you know, in the event that we have electric buses in our system programs?
Councilmember Devine, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, we will be working on a report later on that would look at the feasibility of the electrification of the buses. Our staff is, will be bringing that forward at the future in the form of a additional staff report that we are working on in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Will you move 4B?
I will move 4B.
Yes, she can move it. You can second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
4F, please.
Director of Community Services in Parks Regarding Acceptance of Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIIOA, Disability Employment Accelerator Grant from the State of California, Employment Development Department, EDD, to provide employment services for the people with disabilities to the Verdugo Workforce Development Board, VWDB. One, motion authorizing acceptance of WIIOA grant from the EDD to the VWDB in the amount of $350,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute all agreements, certifications, and documents.
Ms. Devine.
Thank you. Can you just, you know, actually, I pulled the wrong one. I wanted to pull the one prior to that E. And I don't know, what's the procedure? Do we have to go back and...
Well, we'll have to have a motion to reconsider.
Motion reconsider. I mean, is there a question that perhaps I can answer?
Well, I just wanted, you know, I just am so impressed with the program where we are employing the homeless. And I wanted everyone to know that, you know, the particulars about where we, how we recruit the homeless in, in Item E.
I mean, yeah, I think staff can answer that question.
We can answer that question if that's okay with the mayor and council.
Yes, Judith. Just explain the matter, the fact that we pay, the GYA is involved in workforce for them.
Sure. So, 4E, Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Devine, this program is called Rise Program Measure H to Serve Homeless Individuals with Paid Work Experience. And this is the third year we receive this funding from Los Angeles County, and we specifically work with Glendale Youth Alliance. We provide them a contract for $25,000 to serve as the team supervision of the homeless clients that are placed at different parks facilities to do basic maintenance and cleanup. So they supervise as they learn on the job, different areas of landscaping, cleanup as such. We also pay, the motion is also to distribute $49,900 to the Foundation for California Community College, which is a payroll company. They do payroll administration that enables us to pay those individuals $13.50 an hour for 200 hours. So it's a very comprehensive program to serve homeless individuals. We also provide food while they're in the program, as well as different types of supportive services, toiletries, anything they need to be successful on the job.
And we recruit from?
We recruit from, we use, we work with various community-based organizations, specifically in Glendale, Ascencia. We're closely with Ascencia to receive referrals for the program. The city of Glendale is a community of care city, so we work closely with the staff involved in the city of Glendale that works with homeless organizations to make sure that we promote this work-based learning opportunity to different individuals.
Thank you. I just thought it was important that the community understand and know about these programs that we provide for the homeless, because I know we get a lot of questions about what are you doing for them and kind of support systems. So thank you for that information. Thank you. And I'll move 4F.
I'll second it, but I do have a question. So on the disability grant, is there outreach to veterans groups? There must be some veterans out there that could participate.
Yes. So for this particular grant, the Disability Employment Accelerator Grant is for the amount of $350,000 to work with developmental disabilities and intellectual disabilities. It is to make sure that we are developing career pathways into sustainable living wages. So we work with various organizations that work with people with disabilities, veterans included. We actually also have a veterans employment grant that we're working closely with Veterans Village in Glendale to ensure they have access to that grant as well. But yes, we do our best to outreach, and if there's any organization that we've missed, we're also open to partnering up with other organizations to ensure that they are aware of this funding opportunity.
Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
City Council and Staff Comments.
Well, I'd like to lead off with some sad news, and I would ask that we adjourn our meeting this evening in the memory of a great person. I think we have some graphics. Mr. Mark Sturdivan. Mark was a native Southern Californian and a Glendale resident since 1997. Before coming to work at the city, he spent 30 years working in the motion picture and television industry, including nine years as the Assistant Director on the TV show Frasier. After moving to Glendale, he became actively involved with open space issues affecting our community. As a result, he co-founded Glendale Crescenta Voice, Volunteers Organized in Conserving the Environment, the organization which helped preserve the hillside property known today as the Verdugo Mountains Open Space Preserve. In 2005, Mark's interest in the environment led him to make a career switch and take a position with the Bolsa Chica Land Trust as their Executive Director. In January of 2007, he came to work for the city of Glendale as a Senior Administrative Analyst. Mark's primary responsibilities were grant writing and administration of the Community Services and Parks Department Grant Program. Mark's grant portfolio included 15 grants totaling $17 million, primarily in support of capital improvement projects and open space and trails programs. Some of the larger projects include Maple Park Community Center expansion, the Adult Recreation Center, the Pacific Community Pool, Riverwalk Phases 1 and 2, Palmer Park renovation, and Maryland Avenue Park. Mark also organized the first-ever Verdugo 10K and started the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. In 2012, Mark took over the Trails and Open Space Program, which included habitat restoration, interpretive hikes, trail maintenance, and volunteer trail safety program. He represented the city of Glendale on the Advisory Committee of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Mark was the recipient of the California Park and Recreation Society's District 14 Community Service Award and was presented with a bronze plaque from the Tongva Gabrielino Tribe for his help in getting the federal government to designate a Verdugo mountain top as Tongva Peak in honor of the Native Americans who made Glendale their historic home. He had so much love for Duke Magin Wilderness Park and the barn. Just recently, he worked with a consultant to design the interpretive center at the barn. Mark was a great asset to the city of Glendale and the parks profession. We wish our deepest condolences to the Sturdivan family. It is rather sad, but I hate to see him go. He did a lot of good work for the city.
Wonderful man.
Any other comments, any other?
Just, just my condolences to the family. I know that Mark made a great impact in our city and to all the people that he worked with, especially in our Community Services and Parks Department and the foundation. So it is very sad to hear this news, and may he rest in peace.
Are there any other comments from the council? Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Next would be Community Event Announcement, three-minute portion, and the three-minute general public comments.
I have a card from Lenore Solis. Thought I saw Amador. I think she left. Perhaps they left, but next card is from Phyllis Kim.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to address the city council. I am here to report about the unfortunate incident that happened at the Peace Monument, that we became aware of it last week, and then we heard from the gardener of the ARC that actually the defacement has happened a couple more times before last week. So it had happened three times in one month period of time. So obviously, it was a repeated vandalism that, that was really, you know, we were really shocked, saddened, and concerned that, you know, we wanted to make sure that Glendale is the place for, you know, no hate crime will be tolerated. So I really wanted to thank the city of Glendale for standing with the grandmas and on the side of justice for all these years, and thank you for, you know, commemorating the Comfort Women Day year after year, having the exhibit. And I really wanted to thank Councilmember Quintero for coming out to the emergency press conference with the former Congressman Mike Honda last Saturday. It was very short notice, and I apologize that we had to do it on very short notice, but we know that you all were there in spirit. And actually, that news made a huge international news, and it traveled far and wide, and we have been receiving the messages of condolences and encouragement and from all over the world. And we, you know, really wanted you to know that we have the support from around the globe, that, you know, city of Glendale is respected and the people are proud of city of Glendale for standing up for the human rights and the grandmas. I spoke with one of the grandmas, and she was really heartbroken to hear what happened here, but she was really happy to have the support from the city of Glendale, the citizens, and the city council members. So I really wanted to thank you. And because this is not just a Korean issue, it's really, you know, fitting, I think, that, you know, from next year, we may want to proclaim the Comfort Women Day and invite other communities as well, like Chinese and Filipino and, you know, and Japanese as well, because there were Japanese victims, and we want to work with Japanese-American community who actually came out to the emergency press conference last Saturday to show their support. So I really wanted to convey my appreciation, and we will be there in full support of the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Next item, please.
Action Items. Director of Public Works Regarding San Fernando Road Rehabilitation Phase 3 Public Works Yard Recycled Water Main Extension and Adjacent Street Improvement Project 881. Motion awarding a construction contract to Garrett J. Gentry General Engineering, Incorporated, in the amount of $3,625,997.93, approving a 10% reserve for contingency, rejecting all other bids, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract.
Ms. Pierce?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We will go directly to Mr. Amrani, Director of Public Works.
We will go directly to Mr. Amrani, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is a project that involves San Fernando Road Rehabilitation Phase Three and adjacent street improvements. It includes improving the condition of the pavement, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, as well as traffic signal, one traffic signal installation and traffic signal modifications. Also, we are going to improve and add some new storm drain catch basins as part of this project. And finally, it involves construction of approximately 1,600 linear feet of eight-inch PVC recycled water pipeline. The bids were submitted at the end of June of this year, and the lowest bid was Garrett J. Gentry General Engineering Incorporated, and our recommendation is to award the contract to this firm. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Are there any questions from?
I'll move the item.
Who's second?
Mr. Agajanian?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Carpettian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Director of Public Works Regarding Amending Chapter Eight of the Glendale Municipal Code Related to Construction and Demolition, Debris, and Refuge, Yard Trimmings, and Recyclable Material Collection and Disposal to Comply with State Regulations. One, Ordinance for Introduction. Two, Resolution Amending the Adopted 2019-2020 Citywide Fee Schedule by Establishing Fees Under the Building and Safety Division for, one, the Administration of a Construction Waste Management Plan, and, two, an Appeal Fee for the Denial of a Diversion Security Deposit for Applicable Projects as Specified in Chapter 8.58.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We will go to Mr. Amrani again, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This ordinance will streamline the operation and our, update our municipal code in terms of the construction and demolition debris diversion program by consolidating everything in the Community Development Department under the building official and transfer that responsibilities completely so that everybody can have basically one-stop shop in terms of those types of permits. And it also eliminates requirements for twice-a-week garbage service for commercial properties and also removes the requirements that the city must provide all refuse collection and disposal, eliminates the practice of discontinuing recycling and/or organic service for contamination, and eliminates weight limitation for automated containers. And this is the introduction of the ordinance at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And we also have Mr. Jan Bear, who's the building official, who's also available for any answers to questions.
Are there any cards?
Mayor, there are no cards.
Questions from council? Is there a motion?
Introduction of the ordinance and a motion on the resolution.
So 8B2 is a resolution, which we need to vote on.
I would like to move the item.
Would you also like to introduce the ordinance at 8B1?
Yes.
Okay, so let's take a roll call on 8B2.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
We need a second. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Carpettian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be Oral Communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department or investigation and report.
Thank you. First speaker is Sabrina Melora.
My name is Sabrina Melora. I'm 12 years old, and I've been in a public school in Glendale for about three years now, and I do not want Planned Parenthood to put any of their offices in Glendale or in any city because it is dangerous, scary, and sad. And the reason for this is because in most schools, they have the sexuality education program, which is targeted towards kids 10 years of age and older, which is encouraging kids of such young age to start doing sexual activities when they should be focusing on their studies so they can have a bright future and career. And also, at the age 12, you can set up an appointment with Planned Parenthood for birth control and abortion without your parents' notice. And this is dangerous because side effects can make you become very ill, depression, and thoughts of suicide. And so I would like you to keep me and my friends, my schoolmates and I safe by keeping Planned Parenthood out of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Melora?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. I came here a few weeks ago on behalf of Glendale Advocates Against Planned Parenthood. There has been growing concern, as I mentioned the last time, among Glendale citizens about Planned Parenthood's decision to open an office in Glendale. What I want to speak about specifically today is one of the locations that they have earmarked, which is 120 North Glendale, basically walking distance from over here. It's by no coincidence that this particular location where they want to have a 7,000-square-foot facility is within close proximity to schools. .7 miles from Artie White, 1.9 miles from Horace Mann Elementary School, .8 miles from Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and 1.6 miles from Glendale High School. This is by design. Should you look at the locations of Planned Parenthood facilities across the nation, they are always within proximity to schools. That is because Planned Parenthood is determined to interfere in our children's education and to get between children and their families. An article that was published in the Daily Caller on July 7th brought to light an investigation that was done by a group called Our Watch. That undercover investigation was made public on June 26th. In that undercover investigation, it was alleged or what was shown was that the ACLU in partnership with Planned Parenthood was coaching school staff on how to obtain abortions for their students without parental consent and how to document absences so that parents would not be notified or made aware of the reasons for their children's absence. I'm sure you can understand why this is of deep concern to us. My daughter has attended Franklin Magnet School for the past three years. They teach the children to be smart. That means solve problems, make good decisions, act responsibly, respect yourself, others, and the world around you, and take a second, make a difference. Harboring potential sexual predators, coaching staff to be deceitful is not in alignment with those goals. Instead of teaching integrity, they are teaching their staff to be deceitful. Ms. Divine, you said earlier that violence against women is unacceptable. I could not agree more with that statement. Planned Parenthood, allowing Planned Parenthood into our city, into our community, into our school, is subjecting or potentially subjecting our young women, our young girls, as young as my daughter, who is 12, to a type of violence that is often misunderstood. So I urge you to stand against Planned Parenthood and to not allow them into our community. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Andrew Schneider?
My name is Andrew Schneider, and I'm against Planned Parenthood for the reason that they have committed crimes such as selling the parts of fetuses for scientific experimentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Next speaker is Yvonne Schneider.
I'm also here to voice growing opposition in our community to Planned Parenthood opening its doors in Glendale. Planned Parenthood has a documented history of shielding child predators, defying state and local laws, and submitting fraudulent Medicaid claims, and currently is under investigation by the Department of Justice and the FBI for selling baby body parts. Historically, Planned Parenthood branches position themselves in close proximity to schools, no doubt to try to influence our children and interfere with parent-child relationships. Glendale currently has a number of organizations that provide women's health services, including the Glendale Women's Center, the FPA, and Avenue's Pregnancy Clinic. And we do not need an organization like Planned Parenthood in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafi Krikorian?
Hello, dear council members. Welcome, Mr. Quintero. And I'm here today. I've got a full agenda, so I'll get right through it. I'm going to go fast. In 2014, I was conducting a search for multifamily dwelling properties for sale in the city of Glendale. After a while, I realized the older ones were too outdated for modern life, and the newer 1980s vintage were too poorly designed, unattractive, and lacking quality in construction. The way to move forward, I concluded, was to find the property in the high-density zone where I can have a building of my own design, one which I can appreciate and take pride in. Sometime after, I found such property and began my due diligence. When I got to the Building and Safety Office, I checked in with the information desk where I was, where I started my, where I stated my business and was referred to the zoning department. I met with the zoning person at his desk and conveyed my intentions. He promptly checked the zoning map, just like I had done earlier, and unequivocally declared, yes, you can build five units. I closed escrow a month or so later and gave myself some time to better prepare financially for what I considered a major project coming up. When I finally became ready and willing, ready, willing, and able to launch, I started exploring designs and architecture. That's when, that's when the whole thing came to a screeching halt as the city now threw a few surprise switches, virtually taking one of the units off the table and skyrocketing my construction project. Here's how this works. When you do your due diligence, you get a green light. And when you go to begin planning, that's when you get told about the fabricated rules and restrictions that basically contradict the earlier confirmation. For example, you are told you can build five units, and then they require you to give a 200-square-foot open space above and beyond the ample and generous portions of setbacks. With a limited amount of land, they make it mathematically impossible to create a decent design to accommodate five units on an average 7,000-square-foot lot. This is in despite that, the fact that there are many existing six- or eight-unit buildings currently sitting on the same-sized lot, if not smaller. A city is at its best when its government operates fairly and reasonably. It's not fair nor reasonable to throw roadblocks against citizens in progress. It is not fair nor reasonable to make zoning, which you call high-density, and underhandedly take it away and force its effect to diminish. A good government must operate and communicate in good faith. You, as elected members of council, must not allow staff to mislead the public. Whether it's codes, rules, or regulations, these things should not be used as tools of contradiction, confusion, or worse, grind-down development. There are three elements to this problem that need to be addressed. The first one is the demand for 200-square-foot open space on a 1,250-high-density zone. The 200-square-foot open space demand contradicts the high-density concept. The second one of this, the second one is the outdated height limit of 26-foot. That is probably from a time when most apartments were built with eight-foot ceilings. Currently, most apartments and houses have eight- or nine-foot ceilings. The third one is the requirement limiting the subterranean parking structure to be set at a maximum of three foot above ground. This requirement is truly vicious and onerous. It adds on, it adds, on an average, more than half a million dollars to a project for no justifiable reason or benefit at all. In order to comply, a developer would be forced to excavate the whole lot, seven feet deep into the ground. In my research of related city documents, I found other examples where, when you propose to ask for additional open space, you offer to make up the deficit by way of additional height allowances. The only obvious difference between me and them is that they have more economic power, but that should not be, that should not come into play. It doesn't cost more to treat everyone fairly. You, as a city council, should take a very strong interest in my proposal. You have every reason to do so because this is an offer to build more affordable units than the waves of luxury housing that you have been approving for the last decade. I was, it was only a year ago when most of you cried "housing emergency" in reference to the lack of affordable housing inventory. I'm offering, at a minimum, a solution to, a partial solution, if not a whole solution to this problem. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
I hope you're really interested in this.
Do we have any other cards?
No, Mayor, we do not.
That is my last card. Rabbi Bachman. That concludes our business for the evening. We don't have any other new business, do we? So we're going to break, break tradition and introduce Rabbi Bachman from the Chabad, Chabad of Glendale and Foothill Communities for a benediction.
Thank you. I apologize for, I guess, missetting my calendar this evening.
Should we rise?
And I, and I.
Should we rise, Rabbi?
That's up to you. It's a bene, it's, you know, I guess, yeah.
We're in uncharted territory.
Uncharted territory here. And I thank you for ameliorating God's grace by providing redemption. Look at that. Almighty God, we seek your blessings for our mayor, and city council have been elected to lead our great city of Glendale in which we live, work, and play. Help our leaders find common ground so that they may solve the many issues that face our city, and assist them in identifying solutions that serve the betterment of all the citizens of our communities. Remind them that they are not only leaders, but also servants, that it is our responsibility, and it is their responsibility, as it is ours, to serve the common good of all. Assist them in enacting legislation that is equally fair for all citizens of this great city, since no matter what religion one may follow or no religion, and no matter what race one is, we are all neighbors. Grant them the wisdom to know what is right, good, and true, and the courage to act on these moral convictions. May they speak when it is time to speak and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Let your favor be upon this great city, and may she provide comfort, safety, and stability to all who dwell within it. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you very much.
In the memory of Mark Sturdivan, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you. We are adjourned.